Have them do the presentation and then do a conference. And then on the Second Street thing too, because I think we'll have some citizens that want to speak. Should have me do my presentation first because then they answer some questions they have.
All my questions are before page 128. I am gold.
Oh, they will do it on the agenda.
No, I'm good. All my questions were before that anyway.
To be honest with my question.
I think we should do it on the agenda.
I just ordered one and it should be here any day.
Yes.
I think it's better to do it our time because otherwise you're going to talk on Second Street.
I don't tend to know. I thought I asked him if he wanted to speak. The two tech guys I don't have. So I went back to a car. The one that's coming into the mailman, I went back to.
Since we have it that way.
I really borrow something printed every day. It was for any position.
You can let them know that we won't be knocking on it.
So I have now have two big bottles of Coke right there. They'll never use. Yeah. Got me when I had time.
I had the exact same thing. I scanned all the time.
Thanks everybody for coming to the February 10th council session. We all rise from that pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So normally we start this with a public forum. We've got three speakers. Buck Baznet, Sher Worpin, woman, and Wayne Brooks. Are all these related to the Second Street Project, LAD?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys want to speak now or wait until we have a bit of a presentation towards the end of tonight?
I would like to speak as soon as I can because I actually have to take my kids to sporting events.
Okay. The other two, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and start the public forum and Buck, would you come up first, please?
Hi, I'm Buck Baznet. I live at 197 D Street. It's right across the street from the bakery. You might know it with the Out of Control Hedge. That's my property. I'm here to strongly, strongly oppose y'all making me as an individual tax law payer pay for the sidewalk that y'all want to put in, not me. I could care less if there's a sidewalk. In fact, there's a sidewalk in front of my house that I dug back up and exposed and I have been caring for and maintaining because the city of Crestwell has failed to do so. There are sidewalks all up and down Second Street and D Street that this city has failed to maintain. So why on God's green earth am I going to pay for another sidewalk for y'all just to not take care of it again? Not to mention your surveyor that you've hired is saying that my lot lines are wrong. My lot lines were surveyed in 1978. They were registered with the city. They were registered with the county. Those are my lot lines. I have found those pens. I have showed those pens. I am being told that those are not my pens. I don't know how this is possible when this is a line that has been established since 1978 and probably farther. So for y'all to tell me that my lot lines are wrong and you guys want to put sidewalks in and make me pay for it and increase just my property tax, just mine alone, nobody else's, mine alone, to pay for a sidewalk, and I'm, for lack of a better word, screwed because I'm a corner lot. So I get double your all sidewalk that I don't want. I could care less. So I strongly, strongly oppose you putting anything in and in fact, actually, I could care less if any city employee steps foot on my property until this is resolved. And I don't want any of you on my property because that's mine and I pay for it. And it's not, the word fairness, I guess, would be the appropriate term, I guess, it's not fair to me that I have to pay for something that I barely am going to use at all, period. Not to mention, if y'all want to take some of my property, that's fine and dandy. It's called intimate domain. It's a thing that I can't stop you from doing it, but y'all have to pay me fair, fair market value for whatever you take. Granted, it's only going to be a couple hundred dollars worth of property if you go through with this, but I don't care. It's the principle behind it. You wouldn't like it if I came in onto your property and said, this is mine now and I ain't paying you for it. That ain't right and all of you should be ashamed if you think that that's right. I served this country and I fought overseas for this country and a lot of my friends have, a lot of my friends have died and I continue to serve this community and the state. And this is, this is disgusting. To even think that a small town like this is supposed to be the friendliest city in Oregon ain't so friendly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your service, Buck. Thank you. Sher, would you mind coming up?
I think they're going to wait until the.
Did you say Sher?
Sher.
I thought they were going to wait until the.
You might as well.
No, I wonder. Might not have spoken in the mic loud enough, sorry.
Huh?
Might not have spoken in the mic loud enough for you.
No, I probably said it differently and I hate these things, so bear with me. Okay, Sher Waltman, 149 South Second. I think I said that right. So Crestwell, I'm across the street from the bakery, little over. I have 100 feet of frontal property and 110 to the back of my property. The way this is going, the paperwork I keep receiving says I'm going to have less than 110 deep and I'm going to have less than 100 across, and those are fence lines. Fence lines don't bother me. We have measured the street. We have measured your 60-foot over and over. We have been, I have been told that it doesn't matter. Whatever the survey deems, that is what it is. Now it's three feet into my property. I do not agree to pay. We have sidewalks and I've always kept mine up. Wide 11-foot sidewalk. You have all kinds of streets that you claim are commercial area from the, from Third Street on the east side is commercial. First Street, you don't have 11-foot sidewalks down there for what you say is commercial on your property. You have some out front on Main Street and that's it. And I don't see why we have to have an 11-foot sidewalk. Five-foot sidewalk, put a mow strip in. Put an easement in. Keep it green. Usually that's been what's been going on. Whenever you build and you put concrete or asphalt, you have to have a greenway up. Slapping in trees. Who's choosing the trees? Because as soon as their roots come up, if they are not chosen correctly, it is a homeowner's responsibility then for repairing the sidewalk and making sure there's no trip hazards. No, I do not agree with this. I don't think the solution you guys have come up with to satisfy the problems with the parking that we face on Second Street with the bakery. Your solution is not really addressing that. And I've asked questions on looking at the plans. Where's the fire hydrant going? Where are the power poles going? And are you taking complete access away from me to access my driveway during this construction? Those are my concerns. As for signing anything, not until we have some agreements made. So, thank you.
Wayne?
I live at 290 South Second Street and I'm opposing having to pay for the sidewalks that are going in and the reason for that is basically I'm retired, I'm on social security, so is my wife. My 94-year-old mother-in-law lives across the street. She can't afford $20,000, $30,000 for sidewalk, her or her guy. And there's other neighbors here that, Jim, my neighbor, he's retired, he's unlimited income. So to have to be paying for something like that is really a crush to me and so I totally oppose this idea. What I was thinking of is that back in the seventies, late seventies, one of the universities in up west here got a grant of $100,000. You know what that grant was for? They tried to do a study of why would that person get a headache? It's totally ridiculous and there's a lot of grants that are put out today that are totally ridiculous. Now, what you want to do on Second Street, I'm all for that for public safety, repairing the road, putting in good septic system, maybe perhaps even some water in some areas. That needs that, but to have the public pay for that, why not try to get a grant from the government? Because what you want to do is something that'll benefit the city, that'll benefit the neighborhood. I just don't think that just a handful of us need to be paying for that. And so one of the other things I think that would make a good situation, that I don't know if you'll be agree with this or not, but make it a one-way street. You still got room for the fire trucks and any emergency vehicles that go down that street, but then you can have parking on both sides because you're going to be eliminating parking on the west side, on the east-west side of the street and that's just going to cause a major headache for the whole neighborhood come summer when the bakery's in full bloom. So really give it a considerable thought. I don't want to pay for this and I know that my mother-in-law definitely doesn't want to pay for it or the other neighbors, so please consider that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we have no other citizens who want to speak. Thank you guys for stepping up and speaking out and I appreciate it. We're going to move on to the mayor's report, which is a proclamation of future business leaders of America. Is Ms. Johnson available?
She's not here. I'm Kendra Anderson and I'm the advisor for the FBLA.
Would you mind coming up and saying a few words about the FBLA, introducing all these beautiful kids down here? They're going right up to the podium. You got all the responsibility now.
Thank you. Well, thanks for having us tonight. This will be our third year. We started a chapter at the middle school and part of the reason we started it was because the CSD Design Committee that the community and district did a few years back, they talked a lot about the programs at the high school and how successful the FBLA and hosted programs were at the high school. So we asked how we could support the high school and so they said if you can start a chapter at the middle school. And so we did that and we have a great group of students. Some of our students have been in it. All of this will be their third year, they're eighth graders tonight and I'll introduce our officers. We continue to have between 25 to 30 students. We actually just hosted the regional competition, which was 12 schools and over 250 students we got to host at Crestwell Middle School. So that's the first time that we've hosted something like that and it was a huge success. Our community, our staff, our school board, everybody just pitched in, so it was wonderful. And our students did really good too. We have quite a few first place winners in our, in our group today. Is it okay, do you want me to introduce them?
Please, that was the next plan. If they could all stand up, we could all recognize you and see you.
Okay, so we have three presidents, Chloe Coletti, Chloe Miller, and Aubrey Moran. And our vice president is Sophia Niblet and our secretary is Avery Herring. And then our treasurers are Oliver Coletti and Lyric Pelham. And I think Lyric's not here tonight, but that is our officer team. So we have a very strong officer team this year. Obviously, we had three presidents, they were all ready to go. So we're super excited. We will head to our state competition in April and we had 27 qualify and then, and we're hoping for someone to qualify for nationals this year as well.
That's awesome. Thank you. Well, I'm going to read a proclamation for all of you guys' hard work. All right. Office of Mayor, City of Crestwell, were in proclamation declaring February 9th through the 15th, 2025 as National FBLA Week. Future Business Leaders of America, Inc., FBLA is a nonprofit organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee in 1942 and IO became FBLA's first state charter in 1947. And Crestwell Middle School officially chartered its FBLA local chapter on November 15th, 2022. FBLA includes more than 250,000 members and advisors and 4,600 chapters nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools. FBLA is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship. Through innovative leadership and career development programs, and FBLA members perform community services, activities, and strive to build a student understanding of the, excuse me, realities of the modern business world. FBLA teaches middle school, high school, and college students basic business and leadership principles and assists them in the transition from school to work. Now, therefore, the city, Crestwell City Council does hereby proclaim February 9th through the 15th, 2025 as National FBLA Week at Crestwell Middle School. Congratulations. Now, we don't want you to go anywhere yet. We have a few things for you, so I'm going to come down there and we're going to hand out the proclamation for you Kendra and the rest of you kiddos, we've got something for you. You guys want to come up and get a picture? Maybe we'll put you in the paper on the front page of the website, something neat?
That'd be fun.
Hand the proclamation to you.
All right, say cheese. Cheese. All right, nice. Thank you very much.
Okay, the city come up with some fun stuff for you. There's a little token in there, has a little saying on the back. Something fun for each one of you. Appreciate you guys and all the hard work representing the town. Doing such a good job. Appreciate you guys and keep up the hard work. Mayor's happy to brush you, you're going to do well, you better make. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Again, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work and representing Crestwell also doing such a good job on that and I'm going to allow you guys to go ahead and be excused if you don't want to hang out for the whole session. I'll give you guys a few minutes if you're, thank you guys, appreciate you. Next is correspondence and I believe we didn't have any correspondence, correct? Correspondence, so then we'll. Counselor Clark?
Yes, were we going to do the planning commission appointment too?
That one, we had, the two people dropped out. One was focused on councilor, the other one had work issues, so we are still looking for a planning commission appointee. Caitlin, is that our hand raised?
The one that was interested in council dropped out too. He dropped, he completely removed his name.
Was that Tim? Okay. Okay. So if you guys want to be on the planning commission and help change Crestwell.
I probably want to be on the planning commission.
Excellent. That's worth shooting for. All right, so we'll head to the consent camera and all items are considered routine unless we need to pull them for correction. I have a correction, so I'm just going to spit it out right now. Caitlin, can you correct me? Counselor Morris was excused last session. I did not announce that, so I need to correct that in the notes, please. Counselors, any other corrections? No? All right, we'll move on. That puts us at the administrative report. We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Counselor Kent?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Steed has seconds of motion. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Now we'll go to the administrative report. First, we have the January 2025 bills.
The bills are here, presented to you for this past month. If there's any questions, we can try to answer those.
Counselors? Stacy?
I actually have a few. I'll start with the organization, Association of Water Utilities. What, what service do they provide?
Cliff, can you respond to that?
Yeah, that's, oh, wait, it'll be you. They provide training sessions for Public Works.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
No, you go ahead and ask more.
I see some charges for the city cards.
I don't think they're going to help.
They're in a couple of places. Are these like, for instance, on the same page, which is the first page of the check register, there's a city cards for $5,253? Are these like credit cards that employees have? Is that what these charges are?
Yeah, they're credit cards that are issued to employees for purchases of city things. The biggest expense here, and I can have Jim explain that to you, was the iPads. We found a good deal where, but we could only get two for a card, so that's why you see them spread out on a variety of cards so that we could maximize that discount, so.
I forgot about that. Thank you. That actually makes sense. And then, can you tell me what Integ-Jotek is? I don't know if I'm saying that right. Integotek?
Integotek.
Seeing? I knew I wasn't saying it right. Thank you. Integotek, is that what you said?
Yes.
What is that?
It is for, one is for cameras at the airport, the security cameras, which is a core grant.
Mm-hmm.
And then Jim talked to the other.
The other was the access control, so the door lock entry system with the key card. We're having that be done. It's out of date now.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. That's all I got.
Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Kent?
One that I don't recall seeing before was Perfectus Incorporated. I'm just curious about that.
Jim? That's our cleaning service for here, the community center and the Cobalt Activity Center.
Further questions? Nope? Move on?
Next report.
Yep.
Okay. Next report is from our activities with the Sheriff's Department and Sergeant Speltrich is here to give a brief overview.
Hello, everyone. January was a pretty decent month for the sheriff's office here at Crestwell. You'll see that our calls for service were about on par for what they were last year. We were off by one, so we were really close, but not quite there. We did have some somewhat high-profile calls. The biggest one was the New Hope Baptist Church burglary that I spoke to recently. That did happen. We do have a suspect identified, it's a matter of catching up to him and holding him accountable. You'll see that there was a jump in self-initiated activity. We have a new deputy here in the city who is really getting after it, self-initiated activity. He stays very, very busy and makes a lot of stops and arrests result from those stops and so that's good. We do have a deputy who is currently in Crestwell, training with Deputy Brooks. He's helping to train that deputy with the hopes that that deputy will get signed off and sent to main office to, to work up there, so. After last month's council meeting, we set up one of our radar signs in the area of 10th and A or 10th and Meadow splits right there. We set up one of our radar signs and about halfway through the month, we realized that there was a technical error with that sign, so it wasn't recording speeds. So it was recording speeds accurately, but it was catching vehicles all the way down at the mill because of how it was pointed. So we have, that, that doesn't help. It doesn't, it doesn't give us a good read, so that has been, we're setting up to remedy that. It's a matter of finding a new spot to drill holes into a post and get it set up, but that's going to be something that we're doing in the next couple of weeks, so we're working with Public Works on finding the best spot for it. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did include last year's monthly chart that has the total calls for service for the year, so I'm happy to talk about anything you might have questions about.
Counselors, any questions? Counselor Steed?
Is the, the new deputy, the extra energy, does he, does he get the credit for the five speeding certifications?
He gets two of them.
He gets two of them? All right, all right.
Three of them were me.
Awesome. Great job.
I just happened to be in the right spot.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Sergeant Speltrich? No? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Next report that's attached is from the city attorney for January activities. If there's any questions on that, they can try to answer those. If none, the next is the code enforcement report. Again, if there's any questions on that, we can try to get answers for you on that. I may not be able to answer those. And the final is the building permit recap report and a summary of activities that.
Let's back up one for Kuzpender. Counselor Cusack's got a question?
Just more of a comment. Just kudos to Chelsea. Looked like she'd been very busy and doing a lot of great work and just thank her for her hard work.
She's had a fairly busy period of time, so. So that's the end of my report, if there's no further questions.
No questions on the building report? All right, coming back to me. Council action item A is we're going to appoint a city council tonight. We're going to do, conduct some interviews. The plan is to have, one of them dropped out, right? So we have Alan and Norma Jean's here, so we're going to, each of you step up to the podium, we're going to have you talk for three to five minutes and tell us, you know, why you want to do this and why you're risking it all for all of glory. And if you have one, we can wait in the conference room while we, while we interview and we might have a few questions, we make sure it's even. Alan, would you mind waiting first? Thank you. Norma Jean, would you come up first, please, and give us a little history? Most of us know you, but some of us might not.
I'll tell you right here, right now, this morning I fell down and hit my head and spent several hours in the ER today. That's why I have this fancy head.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, I joined the Park and Tree Advisory Committee when I, certainly after I moved into the city about seven years ago and I really enjoyed helping out in the city and doing things that made a difference and my next plan was to go for city council and I, and I have been on city council. And my next plan was to go for city council, and I, and I have been on city council for three years until my term expired, the December of last year, and I had decided not to run because of other health problems, but I know what I'm facing now, so I don't have to worry about the health problems. I think I can, I can still do a lot of good and, and help the city in ways and represent all members of our, of our city at the best of my ability. I have more time, huh?
Well, we're still yours if you want.
Well, I just love my town. It's a, it's a beautiful town. It's not a perfect town, but it's a very good town. We have a wonderful police department that I support completely, and all the city employees I totally support. They do a really good job, and we've got a good city council going already, so I'd like to be part of that.
Excellent.
I think that's good enough. Unless you have more questions.
We, we might have a few more questions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Counselors, we've got a list of pre-approved questions. Does anybody like to ask one? Counselor Kent?
Sorry, I'm, it's tricky, itchy finger, trigger finger. So I would like to ask this one, just because I'm always curious. What do you believe are the greatest needs in Crestwell? It says to please share your list if you have one. I'm, I'm just curious what you believe are the greatest.
Yeah. There's so many needs we have, and city council can address some of them, but they, they're not going to be able to solve all the problems. One of the biggest things is homelessness, and fortunately, I've heard that two of them have gone out off the street, so that's limiting the amount of people that we have to deal with. We, you know, we, we want to help them, and we also want to protect the city from any, any negative behavior from the people that are homeless. We're facing the second street rehabilitation, remodel, whatever you want to call it, and there's just no clear-cut answers that solve it for everyone. It's another thing where we, we just have to try to figure out what's best for everyone and how we can, we can make it not hurt anyone too badly and solve, at the same time, solve the problems we need to solve before it deteriorates any further. I think that those are, those are enough of them right now. There's, there's, I could talk about, on for a lot more about the different ones we have, but those are some of the biggest ones that we're facing right now.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Castillo?
Sure. The city council meets twice each month. Prior to the meeting, counselors receive a packet of materials to be covered in the meeting. These packets are often 50 to 200 pages in length, and need to be reviewed prior to council meetings. Counselors are also expected to serve on committees. Can you commit the necessary time to serve as a city council member over the next two years?
I have been doing that for three years now, and I, I always pick up the printed copy the, the week before, so I have it, have the whole weekend to read it and study it and, and look into what we're going to be looking at, make decision, some ideas of what my decisions might be on the, on the questions coming up, and I commit to, I've already committed to other meetings. It's not a problem. It's, it would be normal life for me.
Excellent. Counselors, any other questions? All right. Thanks, Norma Jean. If you wouldn't mind waiting in the conference room.
Just for clarity, did you want to ask the ethics question? Because.
Which is not part of the.
Yeah, it's on the.
I thought it was on the application.
Last, it's a long question.
Number six.
That was a request from the council at the work session to have the ethics question.
Number six. I bet we were going to ask them all. Just ask them. Number six.
Yeah, I can read it.
Okay. I know it, number six.
All right. City council members must comply with state law when participating in official actions that could result in financial benefits for themselves, a relative, or a house member, household member, excuse me. This can come into play if a counselor has a relative, as defined by state law, working for the city, or they, or a relative own a business that does business with the city. Relatives are defined as follows. The spouse, parent, stepparent, child, sibling, step-sibling, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law of the public official or candidate; the parent, stepparent, child, sibling, step-sibling, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law of the spouse of the public official or candidate; or any individual for whom the public official or candidate has a legal supportive obligation. While conflicts of interest will not disqualify an applicant from serving, council members are required to declare conflict or potential conflict of interest when actions might financially benefit themselves or a relative. Would you service on the council, would your service on the council create any conflicts of interest that might impact your ability to participate in certain actions of the city council?
I have no conflicts of interest whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morris?
I might like to ask the following questions, question? I guess I've talked into this. There are three standing committees that city councilors serve on: public safety, transportation and public works, and administration and finance. Which of these committees would you be most interested in serving on and why?
I, I was, I served in public safety for the whole time I was city council member, and that's because I have a passion for, for enforcement, not enforcement, but just safety of the city. And participated in national write-out, helped, helped plan it, and, and helped run the city booth while I was, while, when it happened. And what were the other two?
Transportation and public works and administration and finance.
I'm, I'm happy to serve where I'm needed, but I'm also going to be on the, hopefully I'll be back on the Park and Tree Advisory Committee, because that's the most fun committee in the whole city of Crestwell. It is the only really fun committee to be on. We plan parks and trees and Arbor Day celebration. It, it is so much fun. So I've, I've already kind of put my hand up for planning commission and then the public safety commission. I think it's two we usually sign up for, but it, you know, it depends on the, on the needs of the city, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kramer?
All right. How will you work together with city councilors, and how do you deal with conflict?
I think we've done fairly well as, as a group, dealing with any differences of opinion. I mean, we never agreed on everything. It just, there's, you can't get six, seven people, including the mayor, who are going to be agreeable on every situation, but we've managed to, to talk things out and work things out, and that's, that's the way you do it, is just to be able to, to discuss things if there's differences of opinion and respect each other. That's, that's one of the most important things, is to show respect for each other, whether you agree or disagree with the other person.
That should be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let Heather grab Alan and start that one.
We'll just ask the same questions as we did before.
Cobalt, each of you, I'm asking the same one you asked. Please get his report. This, this should be for that.
Come on up.
Thank you, Alan, for stepping up and trying to join this party. You've got three to five minutes. If you would, tell us about yourself and why you want to join, and we'll have a few questions for you afterwards.
Okay. Biggest thing I've lived through Crestwell a little over 25 years ago. It's a great, small community, which I love, and I wanted to raise my son in that and my family, and that's what I've had so far, and I really enjoy it. And I got to know some of the people. I don't know a lot of people. I'm kind of to myself, and I've owned a house here. I've also rented here, and currently I rent right now, and I do see some laws that get passed, or some things that get passed that the community should or should not get paid for, and I just want to put a voice to some of those people that, because I've been on both sides of it, and I kind of would like to be a little bit of a voice to these people to let them know that, hey, I'm here for you as well, because I don't want the government overstretching, overreaching, making us pay for something we shouldn't, shouldn't have to pay for. And so I just kind of want to be part of that.
Feel good about that?
What's that?
You feel good about it? Ready for some questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I'm going to start. Counselor Kent, will you start us off with your question?
Sure. What do you believe are the greatest needs in Crestwell? And it also says to please share your list if you have one, but really, what are, what do you think are the greatest needs in Crestwell?
The biggest needs, I think, in Crestwell are, I look, I see a lot of community stuff going around. We've got the fire department, where they have the movie nights and stuff like that, and I, I enjoy seeing that kind of stuff in a smaller community, and I think that's a great idea. I think a little bit more of the parks and stuff. We have a few little parks here and there. I don't think they're really shown too much here, and so I know the one over on the other side of I-5, it's a nice little park. Don't see a lot of people there besides, hey, every once in a while you see someone fishing over there, but I know that we have a lot of homeless issues when it comes to that, and I think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit. I do like to have, see a clean community, and that shows our children what a good, something, if you're cleaning up for yourself, it shows your children to clean it up for themselves. It shows them pride and where they live.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Kramer? Can you ask your question, please?
All right. How will you work together with the city councilors, and how do you deal with conflict?
I deal with conflict on a daily basis with my current job. I'm a driver manager, and so I drive, I manage a little over 30 drivers, where most of them are owner-operators, so they can tell me no, and so I'm good with that. So I talk them, sometimes I have to talk them into doing something that they really don't want to do. It benefits them in the long run, and it doesn't, the load doesn't pay what they want it to pay, but I need to get them to another place that where it pays a lot, so it, it benefits them a lot. I do get along with different people. We, all minorities I deal with, I don't mind. I was an Air Force brat, so I've dealt with so many different people. I've lived everywhere from England to Hawaii, and so I've seen different nationalities. That doesn't bother me, so getting along with people is a really good thing for me.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Holt?
Bear with me, they gave me the long one.
For a reason.
Well, then I'm out of here.
City council members must comply with state law when participating in official actions that could result in financial benefits for themselves, a relative, or a household member. This can come into play if a counselor has a relative, as defined by state law, working for the city, or they, or a relative own a business that does business in the city. Relatives are defined as follows. The spouse, parent, stepparent, child, sibling, step-sibling, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law of the public official or candidate; the parent, stepparent, child, sibling, step-sibling, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law of the spouse of the public official or candidate; or an individual for whom the public official or candidate has a legal supportive obligation. While conflicts of interest will not disqualify an applicant from serving, council members are required to declare a conflict or potential conflict when actions might financially benefit themselves or a relative. Would you, would your service on the council create any conflicts of interest that might impact your ability to participate in certain actions of the city council?
Not at all. No, I have no family members that want to be anything to do with.
Thank you, Stacy. Counselor Steele?
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for applying for this position. The city council meets twice each month. Prior to the meetings, counselors receive a packet of materials to be covered in the meetings. These packets are often 50 to 200 pages in length, and need to be reviewed prior to council meetings. Counselors are also expected to serve on committees. Can you commit the necessary time to serve as a city council member over the next two years?
Yes.
Simple to our delegate here. Counselor Morris?
There are three standing committees that city councilors serve on: public safety, transportation and public works, and administration and finance. Which of these committees would you be most interested in serving on and why? Do I need to repeat them? They're pretty pariah sounding.
I've been doing transportation now for 36 years, so as a, as a truck driver, I worked for the railroad as well in my young adult life, and then I went straight from there, so I went straight to driving truck, and I've been doing that, like I said, for 36 years. The last three years, I've been a driver manager, so I've advanced out of that, but that would be a really good place for me, because I do understand some of the laws and what some of the streets need.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Before we move on and bring Norma Jean back, is there anything else I'd say before we decide?
I've just talked to the sheriff, the sergeant earlier, and yeah, he just goes, why are you doing this? But just tell me for a while. But my biggest thing is, I've got a son, he's almost 12 years old, and I kind of want him to see what else he can do in his life, and so I just kind of want to be the person in front of him.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Heather, would you mind getting Norma Jean? If you want to have a seat, Alan.
Thank you.
I see you drive bus, too. Yo.
Never.
The cargo talks back at that point.
Well, again, thank you both for applying. We need to help, and we appreciate the diverse mindset you guys are both going to bring to the table, but unfortunately, we've got to pick one. It is not an executive decision, it is a majority decision, so currently I'll be accepting nominations for the city council position for the next few years. Counselors? Counselor Kent?
Excuse me. I would like to nominate Norma Jean Aspar.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Counselor Holt?
I would like to nominate Alan Dukes.
Thank you. So we have two nominations, so this time I'm going to take a vote for.
I'd ask for a show of hands for each candidate, then, then do the vote, the motion after that, so.
So there, can I get a show of hands for Norma Jean? Can I get a show of hands for Alan Dukes? Okay.
Now you need to talk.
We're going to have to do a further discussion. So anybody got any extra information that's going to change somebody's mind? I'll say something. No, you go ahead. No, I'll go first.
Maybe the candidates may have something to say that may change their minds. So I, I would just a suggestion, maybe a closing comment? I don't know. It's up for discussion.
Any further comments, Norma Jean or Alan? I'll start with Norma Jean.
Do I need to stand up?
No, you can sit.
I, I don't know anything about him, so I can't say I'm better at this than he, than he is, because I know absolutely nothing about him, about the other candidate, if I'm going to know his face. Hi! So, you know, I, you know, I've had, I have three years of experience as a city counselor, and I think I was well-respected in the community as a counselor. I worked hard to do what was best for the.
was best for the city, as we all did.
Fair. Thank you. Alan?
I'll, I'll sit here, and I'll do what is my best for the city. And I'll bring in a different opinion. Most of mine has been from years of experience in life and seeing what everybody else has been doing, and seeing what the government's been doing to, for the people or to the people. And so I have an opinion on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, we'll try this again. Show of hands for Alan. Show of hands for Norma Jean. Stillmate again. I want to speak, and this is no disrespect to either one of you. I choose Alan just for a different perspective on council. Simple as that. I think we need, we need a different perspective. And Norma Jean has had her time, and she's done a great job. And so that's why I lean towards you. It's something different to bring this council, to bring this city, another voice from a different aspect. And your experience and background, I think you fit right in. So that's why I would choose you. Counselors, you want to have anything to say? Counselor Holt?
One of the biggest reasons why I was leaning, or am leaning towards Alan is because of his transportation experience, I think, in this state that the city of Crestwell is in with all of the pending road projects and stuff. I think that his, his experience and skills will come in very handy.
Thank you. Counselors? Anyone else? Hard decisions? Counselor Kent?
This, it really is a hard decision. I was thinking at first, I was looking over the applications, and, you know, I already have, I already know what Norma Jean brings, which is fantastic. I'm not too familiar with Mr. Dukes, but I really like the transportation experience that you would bring as well. You know, we need, we need that as well. I think that's just a mutual respect. I don't think there's a bad decision here. It's just hard to come to a majority.
Well said. And the counselors? Counselor Stea?
I would just say that I think that Norma, Norma Jean has served on the council, already kind of knows the system and how, what, what we do here on diet. And it would be, I think, just, getting her up to speed, it would just be in short order. So, you know, there is a lot to learn, a lot to go forth. And it's only for, it's only two years left. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm leaning towards council, former councillor, Norma Jean's experience.
Excellent. Anyone else want to comment before we vote again?
I'll do.
All right. Counselor Kramer?
So with Alan, it's a new perspective. You know, he does have a wealth of knowledge just by looking at what he has right there. Sometimes you do need new eyes to see stuff. It is, it's nothing disrespectful. You know, everyone has, Norma Jean had her chance with this. And she'll do another good job if she was, if she's chosen up here. But through my point of view, I would like to give Alan a chance.
Thank you. Well, we'll do this again. All those for Norma Jean, please raise your hand. All those for Alan Dukes, raise your hand. So I'll be accepting a nomination for the council seat to fill the next two years, motions, excuse me, to fill a seat for the next two years.
I'm kind of not sure what.
There's a motion in the, somewhere.
I'm not on that page anymore. I apologize. Thank you. I move that the council appoint Alan Dukes to fill the remainder of the council term expiring January 2027.
About a second. Counselor Kramer, seconds of motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. The motion nomination passes unanimously. Alan, you'll be sworn in the next work session, and congratulations. All right. Thank you again, Norma Jean, and hopefully you get healed quickly.
Thank you.
And stay in touch, because Parks and Trees still need you.
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow. Well, I don't know if I can be on the, on the committee anymore since I was liaison.
Yeah, well, we still might need more. People, people leave. All right, the big votes to the council item, action item B, that Curtis Thomas.
Can I get, can I start? So it's not in front of us. We have an annexation decision, and so we reviewed this at the work session last month. And tonight's the night to make a decision. So it was initiated by Ken Ray, who's in the audience with his wife, Ms. Lee, to annexen three point one four acres into Crestwell city limits. And so the criteria for, the criteria list for an annexation is rather short. The property has to be within the urban growth boundary, which it is. It has to be contiguous to city limits, which it is. The property has to be rezoned according to its comp plan designation, its comprehensive plan designation. The comprehensive plan designation designation is residential, and Mr. Ray is proposing low-density residential, so it's aligned with, with the comp plan. Key services can also be provided. There's water, sewer, roadway available in Leah Lane and Sixth Street. And then the final item is that Mr. Ray will sign an annexation agreement with the city. And that just guarantees that when the property is developed, that the developer, the property owner, will pay for those urban services to be improved.
Thank you. We're going to have a one-minute public hearing on this. Alan, would you mind set the clock up for us? Any of you here would like to say something, please just come up to the mic. It's a short minute, but I'll give you longer if you've got something to say.
My name is Nick Vanderseis. I live at three-three-four-one-zero, nine block lane, directly in front of the high school. And I haven't had an opportunity to meet the property owner yet. He met a friend that was staying there and didn't get his phone number. So I would love to meet Ken. I would love to meet you at some point and have a conversation with you. And I just have one question. One of the criteria that you listed was that the property entirety is in city limits. My property is to the north, and I'm in county. So it's not that criteria is not met. So I was just curious about that.
It doesn't have to be fully contiguous, but it does touch city limits.
Okay, that's what you were saying. Yeah, that was it.
Thank you, sir.
But I would like to talk to you.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you tell me your last name again? I didn't get it.
Vanderseis.
Thank you. Give it another fifty seconds, in case anybody gets brave. We have a brave soul.
I know.
Good for you.
We live at five-twenty Leah Lane. And I'm concerned with what is considered low-density. I've heard a lot of rumors about what's going in down there. And I'm not really keen on what's going in down there. So I'm curious about what low-density could end up being.
So, low-density, it's up to sixteen point four units an acre. At this point, development has not been proposed. This is just a zoning designation.
So ideally, it's going to be residential? But yet, we cannot confirm that to answer your question.
That's not part of the annexation decision.
Okay. We're just annexing it with the ability to do so.
Correct.
But we're making further decisions down the line.
Yeah. And there will be a development proposal later down the line, and you will be noticed, just like you're being noticed tonight.
And they will still have the ability to take action?
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Well, can you give me your name, please?
Tiffany Russell.
Thank you.
And I know just...
Oh, I do. Oh, I'm impressed.
Another brand here.
Well, I didn't figure I'd be up here tonight, talk to you folks. But I'm Matthew Russell. I live at five-twenty Leah Lane. The reason we actually kind of came down was we saw a proposal that was either with Lane County or the state of Oregon for a rather large apartment complex for down there. That's the only thing we're concerned about. I don't care if residential goes in there. I mean, let's build more neighborhoods. The thing that concerned me, you know, about looking at Crestwell, is middle-class homes go on the market here, and they're gone. People come in by, people want to live here. What I don't want to see happen, and you see this through Crestwell, is we have apartments here, we have apartments there, we have apartments and multiple home dwellings spread out throughout the community. It would be nice to have regular neighborhoods without a small batch of rentals or small apartment complexes. And that's the only thing that really concerns me, plus the traffic going in and out of there. We already have the high school kids. Nothing gets high school kids, love the kids, going up and down that road pretty quick, you know, during lunches and after school. And I don't want to see a big uptick in traffic through there, you know. I can't control that, you know, whatever. I, you know, if they want to build homes back there, that'd be great. If they want to build their home back there, that'd be great. I don't want to see apartments go back there. That bothers me, because what we've done is, we have another neighborhood where we stuck apartments or multi-unit dwellings in. So that's my biggest concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I clarify the zoning again?
The, so the zoning is low-density residential. But just, just to clarify, there was a pre-app proposal, maybe a year and a half ago, that was for a seventy-two unit apartment complex. And I am going to guess that that's where your concern is from. That is no longer on the table. So the current proposal could be up to sixteen point four units. And even that is kind of a stretch, given our wastewater concerns as well. And further, there's only one way onto the property right now, via Leah Lane and Sixth Street. And there's some fire marshal hazard, or fire code standards, too. If you have more than, I think it's like twenty-five units, you need two points of access. So there are some items that are limiting to the development, too. But the seventy-two unit complex is not on the proposal right now. And then just to reiterate, this is an annexation decision. There will be another public hearing with opportunities to comment at the time of development.
Thank you. And I'm going to be clear, I want single-family homes. I'm not a big fan of the apartment buildings for Crestwell either. So maybe I stand to know right now on that. Develop more of those if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick.
Go ahead.
What determines the zoning? And when was that determined?
It was during, I believe it's from the comprehensive plan. And that was, this part was originally adopted, I want to say, nineteen eighty-two. So at some point in time, there was a group of planning officials and city councilors that decided that this parcel would be best used as residential use. And it's, I'd have to go into the history books to give you more of an explanation.
Do you think that's worth it, to understand why that was a choice that they made in nineteen-seventies?
Um, I mean...
In parit, what we're trying to do with the town now?
I mean, I, I think it's...
Isn't that forty years, fifty years has passed?
That's, that's a great critique of zoning. And people in plant, in the planning profession, there's a lot of strength in the working land use system. And then some of its lack of kind of moveability makes it quite frustrating as a, as a city official, as, as a property owner. But, I mean, my kind of off-the-cuff answer is that it's surrounded by residential use. There's a school next to it. It doesn't...
South.
Say it again?
Swamp to the south.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, maybe it should have been preserved as a, as a parkland. I mean, that might have been on the table at some point. It's, it's not a very good industrial site. I would say that it's not a very strong commercial site. So residential is probably what they landed on. Yeah, I mean, all the houses on Sixth Street would predate the comprehensive plan designation, and they're probably just kind of following suit. Yeah. Yeah, great question on that. It's a tough one.
Is that satisfying?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm... My wife and I are the owners of that piece of property. And just to let people know, we plan on doing a family, a single-family dwelling in the northeast quarter. And the balance of the property would be fruit, nut trees, gardens, flowers, just for personal use. That it's our little island of paradise for the rest of our lives. So...
Awesome.
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 There's a, just a sample, if you'd like to see what we're planning, and then to break ground this year.
Excellent.
That's exciting.
Yeah, thank you. Can you send that out to the council, so we can have that? That's true.
Yeah, if we can get a copy of the, of the chair of the council. I think the important thing to realize, too, is with an annexation, you aren't dealing with the development. You're, the only question before you tonight is whether it should come into the property, and those, those issues will be dealt with in subsequent steps. But...
Okay.
What was the property zone before? Why does it have to change? Where?
I have a single-family residence on the adjacent property.
Oh, it's agricultural.
That's A G T five.
Because Mr. Ray wants to connect the city services, so connect to water and sewer.
Oh, gotcha.
And you have to be within city limits to connect.
Okay. I'm not...
And may I just, on, on the record, too, if, since, if the proposal is a single-family house, that's actually a type-one review that's reviewed in-house. So there would not be a public hearing for that. But if there were more than three units being proposed, then that would go to a public hearing. So I, yeah, want to clarify that.
Thanks for the clarification. That helps. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and end this public hearing, since we aren't determining a lot. But I hope that y'all got any questions to answer, and feel better about tonight, so we can go forward. I'm going to go ahead. That ends the public hearing. So I will be accepting nominations, or motions, to annex this in. Counselor Morris?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance number five sixty-five, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory known as tax lot twenty-seven hundred, assessors map nineteen dash zero three dash ten dash double zero to the city of Crestwell, and zoning it low-density residential.
Just a, order here.
Yeah, we're going to, can you read that one more time?
No, have, we're having Caitlin do the reading of the title of the ordinance.
Okay. If Caitlin reads it, are we going to, good as, for twice?
Then she's going to have to read it twice in, in order to proceed.
Caitlin's an ordinance, we've got to read it twice by total unless any of the council wants it read.
Caitlin can read the title of the ordinance?
Sorry, I'm in the minutes. I'm like, wait.
All right. So, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map nineteen dash zero three dash one zero dash zero zero, tax lot twenty-seven hundred, to the city of Crestwell, and zoning it low-density residential. Oh, wait, second time. And an ordinance, the, or, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map nineteen dash zero three dash one zero dash zero zero, tax lot twenty-seven hundred, to the city of Crestwell, and zoning it low-density residential.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor, ten seconds motion. Any further discussion by counselors? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing down to sleep. Okay, Curtis, you're back up. Ordinance five five six.
Thank you.
Five sixty-six, excuse me.
So this ordinance is to amend the title in, in the ordinance that approved an annexation of this... of the city-owned property by the water tanks. Um, it was a scribbler's error in the title that referred to a, the incorrect tax lot, and it referenced the incorrect zoning. The remaining items in the ordinance in the, the public hearing we had last month, and the materials were all correct, except for the title, and so I, I did have a chance to talk to this, the city attorney, and he advised that the property was legally annexed, but that cleaning up the title via amendment would be a lot cleaner for recording sake. And so, this is an ordinance to amend the title.
All right, we'll hold another public hearing for one minute, so you guys can respond if you have anything. Start now. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Caitlin, can you please read the title twice again?
Once now, motion, then she reads it a second time, so.
Sorry, we've, we've changed it up in the past, we'll get back. Can you read the title, please?
One time.
One time.
Ordinance number 566, an ordinance amending ordinance 564 to correct a scribbler's error in the title.
Now a motion.
Do I have a, a motion? Councilor Holt?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance number 566, an ordinance amending ordinance 564 to correct a scribbler's error in the title.
Caitlin, can you read the title again, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance 564 to correct a scribbler's error in the title.
Can I get a second? Councilor Grammer? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Six D? Hazard mitigation grant project, Curtis again?
Thank you.
I'm out of your word.
Very popular tonight.
Uh, so, we have good news that we have shared before, that we received, uh, just about a $1 million grant to relocate, um, the our water system distribution line, and that goes more or less from the water tanks, uh, to downtown Crestwell, down Holbrook Lane. And in order to, uh, for our city manager to sign the grant, uh, we are asking for a motion from city council to authorize Spencer Niebel interim city manager to have the authority to sign all grant, all necessary grant paperwork, uh, moving forward.
Counselors, do I have a motion? Councilor Morrison?
I move that the city council authorize interim city manager Spencer Nie, Spencer Niebel to complete the necessary grant documents and agreements to accept the hazard mitigation grant program project 4562-72, the city of Crestwell Water System Backbone Relocation and Upsizing.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilor Cat, second to it, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, most expressions unanimously. And now we're on council action item number E, adoption of ordinance 2025-02, which I assume is a handful of y'all.
I'll start out. Uh, the city council will be asked to consider adopting resolution 2025-02, which is a resolution that would be declaring the city council's intent to initiate improvements to Second Street. Uh, this action directs the, uh, city engineers to provide a report to the city council on the project for the March 10th, uh, council meeting, uh, and this is a first step to initiating a local improvement district, uh, in, uh, in, for this particular project. At the January 27th, uh, work session, the council reviewed the Second Street improvements, and there's been a, in the packet, there's a, uh, a, a map showing the, you know, what specific improvements are in place. Uh, per the city policy developed in 2023, uh, a local improvement district is proposed to support a portion of the cost for public improvements to Second Street and D Avenue. Uh, there are a number of steps council will need to take in order to create an LID and allocate costs to properties that will directly benefit, uh, from this improvement. The first step is, uh, is tonight's action, and this is basically, if you're going to go forward with an LID, this is the first step that has to be taken. Uh, there's no decisions made as far as what gets assessed or amounts that could get assessed, just basically kicks off the process. On page four of my report, there's, uh, the next steps that would be involved with this, uh, process, and that includes, um, that includes, uh, again, a, another, uh, resolution that would be considered, uh, by the council at the March meeting. Uh, at that meeting, the council would, uh, would take a look at the engineering report and, and, and come to terms with, with how the assessment should work at that particular time. Uh, and then, uh, a public hearing would be established at that time also for the March meeting, and was, the property owners would be notified, uh, and could participate in a public hearing on that before the LID, uh, decisions would be made, uh, final decisions would be made by council. So those are kind of the next steps in that process, if the, uh, again, uh, council is proceeding with the, the establishment of an LID. Again, um, one of the issues, uh, with this particular project is, is, and one of the issues that the council dealt with in, in 2023, when they established the tough fee, is to try to balance the, the benefits that are obtained by properties with the, uh, community needs overall. Uh, as you know, uh, in city code, uh, all property owners are responsible for sidewalks in front of their house, and that's kind of the way the original estimates were done. A council asked us to take a look at some other options on costs, and that's on, uh, page seven of the report, um, and that, uh, shows kind of some, some scenarios that council could consider. Uh, and the, the, the original cost, uh, and, and, and what the LID would cover would be 423,000. Uh, that included the cost for six feet of sidewalk, uh, curb and gutter for the, uh, for D and for Second Streets. Uh, and that was at a, uh, estimated, uh, front foot cost of $207 per front foot. Uh, we outlined a number of alternatives, including reducing those sidewalks, uh, uh, to just, uh, a, a four-inch thickness instead of the, where the sidewalk has to be thickened, and a six-foot wide sidewalk, uh, that reduced the cost to 151 per foot. That would, uh, generated about 308,000 of improvement funds for this project. Uh, the, uh, next one was, uh, again, narrowing the sidewalk even further for what's being assessed, not the physical sidewalk being built, but holding the property owners responsible for five feet of sidewalks. Uh, that brought the cost to about $112 per front foot. And then, uh, then the corner lot issue, something that came up during the comments earlier today, um, and, and one option the council would have, which, which some LID, uh, 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 projects utilizes, only assessing for the long length of a corner lot, uh, in order to, to give a break to a property owner that would otherwise have to face two corners, or two sides of the street. And then the last one was bad option, uh, but having the city cover the engineering costs instead of assessing those costs, and that was $98 per front foot. The other thing, too, that council asked about at the work session is what the history is of, um, the, uh, LIDs, and last LID that was approved, uh, was, uh, in, um, got to find my report here. Um, it was 15 years ago, um, and that LID had kind of a total front foot cost for curb and sidewalks of about $45 per front foot, uh, 15 years ago. And so, uh, that's the last LID that was approved by, by council for a city street project. So those are kind of the facts in place. If council wants to move forward and initiate these discussions, the resolution that's been attached, uh, would have to be adopted by the council. And again, that doesn't bind the council to any, anything, the council can step away from it at, at any point as well, so.
Councilor Holt?
Can you remind me again why we have to put sidewalks in, why we can't just fix the road? I know there's a reason, and I don't recall why.
I, I think, uh, and I might have Cliff, uh, explain this a little bit, too, but, uh, part of this area is within that downtown planning section, which calls for certain improvements to be, be made, um, in the area, and, um, you know, I think the, the, the complete streets and the transportation plan calls for, you know, having sidewalks as well, but-
Right, so, but, but that's something we did to ourselves, right? Council decided to create a transportation plan that has those requirements in it. So technically, we could reconsider that plan, couldn't we?
Yeah, I, I don't think that, that's a plan that's not binding on, on anyone, but I think the directions that have been given, uh, to the engineers in designing this call for doing a complete street, uh, project in that area. Cliff, you can clarify, because I've only been here since December 16th.
You're doing great, though.
So the real answer is, and don't ask me to explain the acronyms, but there's a program that's federal, it's called ProWAG, and it's-
Called what?
It's called ProWAG. And it is an overarching, uh, facility to facilitate states, counties, cities to, uh, enact ADA regulation. So when you do a full street reconstruct, and you are doing work that affects any sidewalk area, that need is a requirement to put in all ADA sidewalk ramps, the whole shebang to be able to meet ADA standards.
Right, but, so if you just want to fix the road, they're going to make you put sidewalks in, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
And this is a standard that we put upon ourselves, or you're saying that it was-
It's a federal regulation that you're not allowed.
So that's unfortunate, that small cities like ourselves can't do road repairs without the egregious costs to our constituents. Um, I, I personally have a real problem with this whole project at this point. I think that, um, a lot of stuff is getting done for a business, and not a, a whole-of-city, in a whole-of-city way. And, um, so anyway, that's just, I thank you for answering my questions, um, I appreciate it.
Councilor Cat?
So I was trying to understand a little bit more about these, uh, LIDs, and it looked, from what I was able to read, that there's two methods of doing that, if I'm not mistaken, please tell me if I am, that one mistake, that one was that the city council could come together and goes, do something like this. And then the other method was that, uh, it could be a petition by, uh, 50% of the homeowners in, uh, in an area. And, uh, that sounded really good to me, because I, I very much like democracy. And it doesn't sound like, everything that I've heard tonight is that people, uh, who live there do not want this. In fact, not only, uh, the voices did not want this, but also it's egregious ask for them, too, because, uh, this is something that could put them out there on fixed incomes, and I feel like I cannot, uh, justify doing that to our citizens here.
Councilor Holt?
What happens if we don't establish an, a LID for this project? What would happen?
There's, there's a number of things that council could consider doing. Um, if the project was going to be built as proposed, uh, with sidewalks and curb without a LID, um, then the council's going to have to utilize funds from other sources to make up that difference, uh, for this, uh, this work. So basically, the, the city taxpayers as a whole would be participating, uh, in the entire cost if you didn't do the LID, or, um, you know, you could ask that the project be redesigned in some other fashion, uh, to avoid doing the work that's, that's called for. You know, my recommendation on it is, is I think the design that's, that's going in place, and there's, there were some concerns that were mentioned earlier, too, that, uh, I believe that, that some of these concerns have been subsequently addressed, uh, with the engineering firm to kind of shift some of these lines and sidewalks out, uh, so not to require an access easement from a couple of the properties that were discussed tonight. But, uh, but the, um, um, you know, the, you know, the, really, the option if you're going to build this project as proposed is, uh, shifting other funds, uh, to this project and not, uh, putting any of the burden on the property owners in this particular place. Um, I think the concept between an LID, of an LID is that the LID and this type of improvement, uh, will, you know, definitely benefit the value of properties on, on the street. So that's, that's a plus, but again, it's being borne by the property owners that are, whose properties are going to benefit from these improvements. So, so it's kind of that balancing act, which, you know, clearly falls into a council policy decision area, so.
Councilor?
So if I understand this correctly, if we don't establish an LID, the project still goes forward, and then it just gets, we, we pull from top, and the rest of the city pays for this. Is that correct?
That's, that's one option. The other option is, is, uh, you know, you know, not to do the project. I mean, that, that's an option the council has.
All right, thanks.
Any other councilors? Um, I would, I can speak.
I'm sorry, but y'all need to talk to Steve Ward, because he's a damn liar. He came into my house and sat with us three, and told us that it was only going to charge us $10 to $20 a square foot for that frickin' sidewalk. Now those numbers this man right here just said is egregious. Steve Ward is a damn liar.
Because he was linear feet, not square.
I don't care, he's a liar.
Right.
You got a date or time, or you got a list, uh, right, time when he did that?
Last, uh-
I met at Tim and Kim's on Saturday, so it was the Thursday before.
Yeah. And he sat in my, my kitchen.
Last week, Thursday?
Was it last, was it last? Yes.
And he met with the three of us. And I told him I wasn't signing anything. This is BS.
We are getting a lot of conflicting information, and we chose to try to group together when that paperwork was going to be presented to us for signing, because we don't hear the same thing. And that's not comfortable. And then when we're told that if we measure, doesn't matter how many times we've measured, that we're wrong, or your property line's wrong, a hollow pipe is going to say that's your property line, not a certified peg in the ground. We want to meet as a group, we want to hear what's going on. We just, there's more ways of doing it. You can put your ADA ramps in, you put the sidewalk width that is normal. This is a- The conflict started with the parking problems. We've had our vehicles hit, we've had our fences hit, we have our driveways blocked by either outside sideways, or people driving in them to use our side, to use our parking, our driveways. I'm the one who's come to the city many times, because the stop sign gets blocked, people run it. I have fought about the parking. I was told that when the bakery was to go in, the city would take care of, and they would recognize and deal with the parking and what was going on if it became an issue. It's an issue. That's all we've asked. Put signs up on the pole that says, "No trucks can park here," so it doesn't block that stop sign. People park in the street, they- Yes, since COVID, the bakery's high intel has dropped. Several days we get very, it's very busy. It's highway traffic. They are bringing highway traffic in. It's not your resident traffic going up and down those roads. LTD used to take two buses down every hour or two hours down that road. Now it's down to one. Now it's down to one. You're asking us to repair a street that we're not destroying. You have a commercial business that brings the traffic off the highway.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it.
I think one of the things we can do, you know, we can certainly facilitate, and I'd be glad to participate in a meeting with the property owners. Because, you know, we, I haven't done that, I'm not fully aware of the concerns that you have, but, but we certainly could do that. If that's something that, that would be beneficial to you guys.
We have not seen a plan, we do not, every plan that I have here, it keeps changing. It's different, different, different. We'd like to see exactly what is supposed to take place.
Yeah, I'd be happy to participate in a meeting with staff and the engineer to.
Let's, let's continue forward with, with the council discussion. Thank you for comments. I stand for the people and I understand if that was my house and I was hit with a $35,000 bill or $40,000 bill, that's insane and I'd be just as upset as Buck is, so. There ain't no hard feelings and I understand your frustration and your concern. One thing I'm considering as, as we've been forward and Sharon, I know you've been here a bunch of times and we've, we've had discussions and this is difficult and no way do I want to stick with that kind of, that kind of bill. As a whole, as we sit up here though, we have to find a creative way to get it done because there, as councillor Holt, I believe brought up at the worst session, is setting a precedent. When then we go ahead and update another new street down the line, you know, if, if we do it for you, then we got to do it for them. And I'm not opposed to doing that, but we need to find a creative way that you don't have a lot of out-of-pocket cost, but you understand there was some benefit to having the sidewalks and whatnot. But we need to be able to move forward together for the next street that has to be repaired so we can be fair as possible to everyone. That being said, this is difficult and I don't know that I can get along with it either.
Nick, we are, you guys are telling us we are commercial, we're commercial residential. Our homes are residential, period. If somebody puts a business in our home, if somebody who's to have one of the homes put a business in it, that home is in a business, then it's commercial. The amount, residential sidewalks will be one side split the curb. If you want to make things wide, you put that most, the first half of Second Street has most strips. City takes care of this side, residents take care of theirs. It's up to them to take care of that. There's other ways of doing it to seriously cut the cost.
Thank you.
Excuse me for a minute. I've listened to all this, if I live on Second Street. If it goes through, has anybody figured out, okay, we're done now, you got 30 days to come up with 20 grand? Or is anybody figured out any finance situation?
I'll speak that quickly as I believe that the city would take out a loan in your name, but I'll let Spencer go ahead.
So basically, first of all, the, with the scenarios that we outlined, the costs, and that's something that we can generate too, is, is to show what the individual impact would be on property owners. But the, I think the average cost is down substantially from what it was on the original numbers. And the biggest numbers that I think council was looking at was related to the commercial property in that particular area which had the most frontage. But, but the way an LID typically works is someone could pay that amount upfront, or someone could pay it in installment payments over a 10-year period, twice a year. So, so that's, that's the two options that folks have with, when an LID is established, so.
So what kind of percentage are we looking at?
Basically be a percentage that would be similar to what the city is, is receiving in interest from our, our pooled funds. So I think that's something, again, we would have to generate, but it's, it's certainly much less than a mortgage rate, so. I think right now we're earning about 5%.
So do we know how much we have in tough fees collected so far? Can the tough fees cover this if we go down to the last option? Because I'm okay moving forward tough fees for every street in Crestwell, since that makes sense for the whole.
If, if we use the tough fees. Why don't you go up to the mic so Sharon Fox can hear?
Thank you. Good question, Raresmith. If we use the tough fees that we have currently, it would, it would postpone or push back the, the next project. We'd have to collect longer to, to be able to do, I think, projected next project is 10th Street.
So don't go anywhere. Cliff, what is the next emergency? I mean, this street seems like it's a big emergency. Do we have another emergency over the next two or three years?
Well, 10th Street is three years down the line if I remember right.
Yes.
Right, so with the tough fee and the LID identified as, as funding mechanisms, it would allow us to do projects approximately every three years. So 10th Street would be the next one. You ask if it's an emergency, depends on who you ask. 10th Street is pretty much falling apart, it's not quite as bad as Second Street. The folks that live on that street thinks it's dangerous, there's no sidewalks, there's pretty deep bar ditches, their children walk to school, so you can just, you know, follow the dots and what you think it's an emergency or not. That's the next project. Without an LID, I don't have the figures, Jim probably does, you're going to have not as much funding coming in on those streets, so it's basically going to push those projects back a year or two, depending on how much income that is not brought in by an LID or where a tough would take over.
Thank you. 10th Street has been a concern to a lot of other parents when I pick up my kids from school. The next one I get asked for is they, they live down that street, it's dangerous, and middle school has the field gated off, so they can't sneak by there either, so 10th Street is a concern. However, I don't want to, I, I'd like to just fix the problem in front of us and worry about the, the next problem after that.
Right.
Is the five-foot, four-inch sidewalk only, no engineering? What, what does that mean exactly? I, I get it in basic terms, what does that mean in construction and liability?
So it doesn't mean anything in construction liability. The project would move forward with the same width sidewalk, the same depth that it needs to be to be built to, you know, withstand traffic. That is just a number that allows us to bring the cost down that assessed to each property. So we are assessing the minimum sidewalk width that we allow in the city is five foot and the minimum depth is four inch. So we're assessing the minimum amount of sidewalk that it would cost to those residences to try to get the numbers lower.
Okay, there, there's been a couple other questions. Is there any other avenues of engineering that, that we can cut costs that you've seen, especially concrete wise?
Um, yes, I believe the answer is yes. We could relook at the block that is within the downtown plan area that is asking us to give wider sidewalk and bulv outs. It's one block within the project and it's not even a full block. So we could probably pull that out and look at it, but I don't think you're going to see a huge substantial lowering in the project of just narrowing some sidewalks in one block or be about a block and a half really. I don't think you're going to see a huge substantial savings in just doing that.
Okay. Councilor, I've done some talking, anybody else have any questions?
Right here.
Councilor Graham?
Is there any way that we can get Crestwell Bakery to help tip in on this? Like if it's their customers?
That's what an LID is for.
They want, I mean, it's just that, you know, it's their customers that are coming in and it's causing all this. And I would just think that maybe they could put, they could help on this right here. You take away the Crestwell Bakery, I don't think you have these issues, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have.
Councilor Holt?
One, one question I have. First of all, tonight we're just voting to establish or not establish an LID, is that correct? We're not, we're not deciding on the amount yet, is that correct? Because one thing that stands out to me is like the six, the six-foot curb and gutter and sidewalk option. So if we're looking at the six-foot one and then we're look, two rows down we have the five-foot, four-inch sidewalk only, the difference between those two is, in this, in this view is really only, all those things still happen, it's just showing you what it would look like if we paid for certain aspects of it, is that correct?
So, so the numbers that are on the chart showing those different options, that doesn't change any of the design, what it changes is how we would assess those costs.
Right, so, so this is why I'm asking. If we are putting in gutter, the curb and gutter and sidewalk, there's been a lot of talk storm, stormwater drainage collection. So, so technically those gutters would be used to generate income for the city of Crestwell, is that correct?
Well, they wouldn't generate income, they wouldn't collect the stormwater that's a problem through that area by having a proper drainage system.
But eventually, if we instill a stormwater drainage fee, then we would be.
Correct, it's a city that that then, but that would probably.
We're all being forward. We don't have none, but we're already.
They've been talking about it, that's the only reason I brought it up. And so, so I guess my point is, is that I suppose in a situation like that, you know, maybe we should consider that when we consider what we're going to assess in the LID. If, if indeed we're going to start collecting stormwater drainage fees, that's going to make matter.
And that was one of the reasons, well, you know, that we took the curbs out of the assessment scenarios for those other ones.
Sure.
Because that could be viewed more as a citywide benefit versus the, the sidewalks that would be more property related. But, but, you know, again, this is all in an area of policy. Council established a policy to use LIDs as part of the financing thing. If council wants to modify that policy with this project, then I think the only thing that council has to be aware of is this will likely impact your ability to do projects on a slower basis than what was in the plan that was considered by the council a couple of years ago, so.
Which could mean an increase in tough fees.
Or, yeah, or we're making it up by increasing tough fees.
May I support establishing a lid because, again, we can't, we can't.
Continue.
Continue this way. As it pertains specifically to the Second Street project, I think we should discuss more of that. But establishing a lid for this project personally, I think is, is the right thing to do. We can't, we can't, as you said earlier, we can't establish a precedent going forward that the city's just going to cover all these costs all the time. And, and so, yeah.
So to get back on track, we are looking to motion to create an LID, which is not setting fees right now, we still have plenty of room to discuss, we're going to have work sessions where we can go all night if you want. But I really agree with Stacy, I think the LID is good going forward. Do I agree with the fees that you guys have been assessed right now? No, not even close. I mean, even, even at the lowest option here is $98.15 a linear foot, so if you got 100 feet, that's 10 grand. I mean, that's, that's a tough pill to swallow as well, so.
You know, the thing that I don't understand is, I know they've got the sidewalks, but what about the grade changes between the properties? I mean, have you ever looked down Second Street?
Yes.
I mean, what are you going to do? You're going to grind down the parking lot for the bakery because it's almost a foot higher than my property. And, you know, I just don't understand, you know, the sidewalks are kind of secondary to actually the real roadwork.
Cliff, you want to answer that real quick, please?
Our engineering firm has surveyed the whole roadway and the elevations are taken into consideration with the design. And so there's very few areas that the back of the sidewalk will be at a different elevation than is existing right now. There are a few places that will be, and those will have area drains and sloping to take care of any water issues that may occur there.
Into the property or into the street?
We're talking about behind the sidewalk where it interfaces with private property.
So you actually come into our property with the drains?
And drain those areas that may have an elevation change to them. That's pretty standard practice on a new roadway. The elevations aren't going to be exactly the same as they are now.
Are you lowering the street or are you raising it up higher?
It depends on where you're at, but I think all of it will be raised maybe a little bit or at the same grade.
Y'all going to do a better job maintaining them this time?
All right. Councilor Garcia?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I was, I just want to say that, that even, you know, the sidewalks, those are homeowners' responsibility, even, even mine, I have to, I'm responsible for my sidewalk. That's just the way it is. And that's not uncommon here or anywhere else. It's also not very uncommon that we're facing the same problem that every city in Oregon is facing right now. We have no money to fix our streets. There's very little comes in from the state, there's no money from the federal government. We were, I don't know how many years ago it was, we had to, we came up with the tough and the lid, the concept of the lid, because we had to come up with a funding mechanism to fix the streets. Because I recall, we were getting a lot of flack that you guys need to do something about the streets. We need to, so I think we went from, with these funding mechanisms, I think we went from being able to do a project from every six years to every three years. And yes, I look down Second Street all the time, I actually drive down it twice a day because I catch the bus there. And I, I mean, I would like to think that we could at least agree that Second Street is in need of repair. It looks horrible. And now I think that we can move forward with this resolution and we're not saying this is what the fee is going to be, but we can, I think if we move forward with it, because I think we need to do something, but, and then I think we need to go back to a work session and come up with some better ways to, creative ways to ease the pain of, of this situation. Because when we first did this, we had no numbers and now we have them. And I think we're all agreeing that, as you said, we need to find the balance. Well, it's obviously out of balance. So we just, I think we need to continue working at a solution to do something about these roads. I don't think that not doing the project is an option. That road needs to be repaired.
We have quite a few roads in city of Crestwell that need repair.
Absolutely. You, I don't agree, I do not disagree with you.
I all agree with the LID, y'all pay for it too.
So here's my question.
Well, we're, we're, I, are we open? I think we're, I think we're done opening.
We'll be up in the next meeting.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to keep going. Well, please come back for the work session where I'm not going to put a time clock on it. You're all good, we'll, we'll go all night. I want to get this right, we, I think all of us up here want to get this right as best we can. I, I agree with you to move forward with an LID, that's my thought. We're going to keep, we're going to move forward.
You agree on the LID? You've talked several ways, prices being given, prices, you know, we know we've got it down this far. Let's start with an LED, you say. Will you take the prices up? Because you've said, yes, we're going to do LED, now we're going to jack the prices up, we're going to charge you this much. Are you going up or are you going to stay down?
No, my, my goal is to hopefully have no bill, I can't promise that though. But what I can promise is I'm going to fight for it as hard as we can. I paid for my street in front of me, my sidewalk in front of me, it was exponentially higher than I anticipated. And so I do know what you're feeling, I 100% have paid for that out of pocket, did not anticipate that when I built my home. And so I do know what you're talking about. With buck 200 square feet or linear feet, that's, that's insane. So yeah, we got to do something better and we plan to. But I think right now we got to get back on track, we got to move forward. The LID is just establishing a precedent so we can move forward on your street and then 10th Street. And so I think we'll discuss costs later and we'll get into it a whole lot later, so right now we just need to establish that. This is the first time, well, I guess last meeting, we got some preliminary numbers that were astronomical and insane. So we'll, we'll work hard at that. Go ahead, Spencer.
Do you want me to set up a meeting with the engineering staff, with the neighbors to?
Absolutely.
Go through this, because that's something that.
I'd like them to see the real numbers, I'd like them, and I'd like them to have something that's more concrete.
Yeah.
So they, they see what we're doing and they don't feel that we're, we're going back and forth.
I would just like honesty, that's all I would.
Yes, 100%.
Because y'all have been lying to me.
Well, I haven't.
Some of us have been here.
I'm bringing all of you guys in right now.
I don't think it was.
So many numbers.
Well, and, and, and I agree, we should be moving forward with anything if we can't give you a solid number in, in some sort of a contractual way.
We'll, we'll get a meeting set up with the engineering, with staff, to kind of go through the project so that everyone can see and we can all hear everything at the same time. and we can all hear everything at the same time, which was one of the concerns that you had.
We've been asking for that.
Yep, and that's, that's what we will do.
We're going to, we're going to give it to you. This isn't a work session. I kind of let it get out of control, I guess, in a sense, we've been doing it. But, you know, you guys are the citizens, you're paying taxes. I have a hard time telling you to sit down and call it a day, so. But we will move forward, so let's move forward on the resolution of establishing the LID. Do I have a motion to establish an LID? Counselor, or Counselor Cusia?
I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2025-02, a resolution declaring the intent to initiate improvements to Second Street between Oregon Avenue and F Street, and D Street between Second Street and First Street, and requesting an engineer report on creating a local improvement district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Moore seconds it. All those in favor of establishing an LID, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Counselor Kent, Counselor Hall are in opposition. Other counselors are for the motion. Motion passes. Name those, Council, Action Item F, Budget Amendment from the airport grant. Is that Shelley or Jim?
Do you want me to?
Sure. You know all the acronym.
I know all the acronyms.
I see. Yeah, we can't, we can't see past that page.
Evening, counsel. Before you is an amendment to the budget. What happened in our, in 2023, we received a core grant, Critical Oregon Airport Relief Program. It's a ten percent match. We received a grant to purchase and install a Han Bay Station at the airport. Unfortunately, we had complications with the runway project and a few other things at the airport. So we had to put this project on hold. We are now ready to move forward and purchase the equipment and get it installed, hopefully by the end of the fiscal year. And inadvertently, when we were doing the budget system this year, we inadvertently left it off. So we're coming before you tonight to put it back in the budget so that I can spend the money to purchase the Han Bay Station. It's ninety percent paid for by the core grant and ten percent by the emergency operations budget outline.
Did we approve this once before?
You did, but during the budget season, we inadvertently didn't carry it over into the new budget system. So it got dropped off, so we have to put it back into the budget system.
That makes sense. Sorry, I looked at this last night, but it's all blank pages for me right now. All, none of us can see these right now.
We're experiencing technical difficulties.
I, I understand that a little bit later.
We don't have anything from page one thirty-two on.
Nothing, yeah. No, it's...
Sure are.
It's the large size of a map inside the PDF that is preventing the rest of the PDF from loading.
Do you want one?
No.
So we need to shoot for a motion.
She has it.
Oh, here, I'll give them this one because they'll be, I'm right after that, too.
Okay. All right. I'll just make the motion. How's that?
Looking for a motion.
I move that the city council approve Resolution 2025-03, a resolution approving expenditures within the airport fund.
Do I have a second? Counselor Kramer, seconds of motion. Any other further discussion, questions for Shelley?
Can you give me the full answer?
Nope, all right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I can bring this to G. Shelley, come back.
I stayed.
Do you need your package?
No, I'm good.
Oh, she's gotten it.
So before you tonight is an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement with City of Eugene and the state of Oregon. So when we take FAA funding, AIP Airport Improvement Program funds, we're required to establish and keep updated a DVE, which is a disadvantaged business enterprise program. What that does is, they found years ago that most of the small businesses couldn't compete with the big businesses for federally funded grants. So this is a way to ensure that small businesses have a chance and the opportunity to also participate in federal grant funding. So every three years, we have to update our DVE. It's loaded on to the website. All the contractors that bid are aware, are made aware and are trained on that. We do a training on this every year through the state. They've updated the requirements. And now, instead of just having an approved DVE plan, we also have to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. And that's what's before you tonight, is the approval to allow the interim city manager, Spencer, to sign the paperwork and myself to sign the paperwork to enter into that IGA for the DVE, which goes through twenty-eight, I believe.
Excellent. Entertaining your motion to approve that? Counselor Hart, are you the only one who has it?
I am.
Back at you, is it?
I mean, I can read it. I'm not entirely sure that I want to. Well, I mean, I, I have, I, I have a question about this, actually. When I was reading through the paperwork last night, it seemed like this was geared towards small businesses, not just small businesses, but with an emphasis on what? I don't, again, I don't have it marginalized, right?
So it could be women, it could be...
Right. So basically, we're talking about affirmative action, which at a federal level has been canceled. And so, if we agree with this agreement, I'm assuming that ODOT, this is probably from the prior administration's guidelines. And I guess what I'm asking is that if we were to go, if we were to not approve this, what, what would that mean for us?
It would mean we could no longer accept FAA funds, federal funds, at this point.
I see. Which would be against the law.
Correct. We would be violating our grant assurances, which we sign every time we take a federal grant. So we do have grant assurances in place that require us to do the DVE and keep it updated.
But that could change.
It could change, but at this point, it has not changed.
Okay. Because I, I don't want, as a city, to put something in place that we can find out later would disqualify us from receiving funds.
I think at this point, it would disqualify us from receiving funds.
If we didn't do it.
If we didn't do it.
Right.
It doesn't mean that we can't change it down the road should the administration change, yes.
That, that seems fair. Thank you. I appreciate it. So I'll go ahead and make the motion unless somebody else has a question.
Well, we'll do questions after. Let's go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. I move that the city council authorize interim city manager Spencer able to enter into the disadvantaged business enterprise program intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the 2024 through 2026 updated DVE program as per forty-nine C of S R, CFR, part twenty-six.
Do I have a second? Counselor Kent, seconds of motion. Now we can have a little bit further discussion before we vote. And to clarify, if we don't do this, we cannot receive FAA funds now. However, if administration changes things, we can also change as well.
That is my understanding, yes. But at this point, we have signed FAA grants and we have the master plan coming up, which should, the grant system should open in April. And I haven't been told that there's been any change, then we would not be allowed to take that, to move that project forward.
Okay.
One point of clarification also, on termination, any party may terminate its participation in the agreement by providing thirty calendar days. So, so it's not something you're obligated for indefinitely if the federal requirements change.
Correct. Any other further questions? No? All right. I got a second, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shelley.
Do you want to keep it?
No, I don't need to keep it.
Thank you very much.
So I move this to Action Item Six H, Approval of Council Meeting Schedule. Spencer, you want to take it away?
Sure. We put together a schedule for the two-year term of this council through the next election. What the schedule formalizes is the fact that you only have, oops, you still have the August twenty-fifth meeting on... Yeah, so that, that August twenty-fifth meeting is not a work session that you typically hold. So that, that needs to come off. And same thing with the, the December one is correct, but following year, it'd be the same thing. So you, you don't do work sessions in August. You don't do work sessions in December. And this shifts any of the holiday meetings over to the Tuesday that follows. And, and so, by formalizing this agreement, then we can plan ahead for those dates that may come into question in the future. So I just request a motion approving the two years of schedule.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended council meeting schedule with December and August, work sessions off. Counselor Cusia?
I move that the city council adopt the amended meeting schedule as attached for the 2025 and 2026 term of the current council.
Do I have a second? Counselor Kent, seconds of motion. Any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That raises up the upcoming meetings. Please review the city website. If you click on your calendar, you can click on the event that you want to see. If it's YouTube, it'll take you right to the YouTube. It also lets you know where tree advisory, public safety is meeting, what we're doing. And feel free to look up the counselors and the mayor. And again, with the D Street project or anything else that is your passion project or something you're concerned with, feel free to email us. We can talk all day long as best we can. We all got jobs. We'll do the best we can. This isn't, this isn't a big decision. But we will absolutely try to respond as best we can so that we can reach out and hopefully have some discussions prior and hopefully ease some, ease some frustration you might have before you get here. And then hopefully, we'll, we'll end it on a good note. So with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn.
Did it, my, I gave up. I gave up. You know, when I saw, I was watching that.
I gave up. You know, I was watching that.